Ready? Seven o'clock. All members present, we'll call the meeting to order. Confirmation of the agenda?
That the committee adopts the agenda for the meeting of June 18th, 2025.
Move by. Counselor Oslach, seconded by Counselor Chapman. Further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. It's carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. I don't believe we have any delegations this evening. The minutes of the previous Finance Committee meeting?
That the committee adopts the minutes of November 6, 2024, noting no errors or omissions.
A mover please. Member Rahi, member Barber. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Action items, correspondence and updates? Staff reports? 6.2.1, Director of Legislative Service Budget Survey. Mover and a seconder to accept the report. Moved by Member De Rosey and seconded by Member Rahi. And Andy, you keying that one up?
Oh, sorry. I got it. Yes, so thank you, members of council. This report presents the budget survey for 2026. I'll just review what's staying the same this year, what we're changing, and then how it affects the budget process. So we are suggesting continuity with last year's survey, repeating questions surrounding core service levels and priorities for the community. We're also continuing to offer multiple opportunities for free, open-ended responses on services, priorities, and the budget in general. And consistency here will help us see any changes in resident feelings about our services, and the open-ended questions provide opportunities for expressions without any limitation based on the survey. So in past years, we've had themed questions in our survey. So last year, we looked at the library. The previous year was recreation. 2022 was quality of life, and 2021 was also looked at the library question. So this year, we're looking at the theme of making municipal finances understandable and accessible. And we'd be developing basically multimedia information. So static pages on our website, social media posts, graphics, and potentially short videos to explain municipal finance concepts like how property taxes are divided, sources of revenue from the municipality, as well as reserves, grants, and borrowing, and municipal budget process. So and we're hoping that this will allow residents to get more informed feedback in the budget survey, as well as, you know, increase trust and transparency of the process itself. So this survey is intended to give, like, general feedback to council as well as staff on developing the budget. Responses are not about any specific questions or decisions, but more are intended to inform the decision-making of council through the budget process. The survey remains anonymous. Residents do not have to provide any identifying information, as well, any identifying information that's provided in the open-ended responses is redacted. Just to conclude, we do believe this is a low-cost and high-value public engagement process, which we have been repeating annually now for a few years, and we are recommending to proceed again this year. Without any questions.
Thanks, Owen. Do any members of the committee have any suggestions for enhancement? We're good with the content and the questions and their formatting? Okay, good. Then we'll have a vote on that to proceed. All those in favor? Thank you, and it's carried. 6.2.2, CAO Report 2026 Budget. Ruth, do you just want to give it, or do you want to?
Oh, sorry.
Move in a second?
It's okay.
Receive it? Okay. A mover and a seconder to receive. Member Rahi, member Chapman? Okay, Andy, thank you.
Thank you for that, and I started too early there. So, yeah, I'll start and I'll pass it off to Heather to talk about some of the other aspects of it. But this represents our preliminary starting point for the 2026 budget. We're still waiting on a lot of inputs for this information, so we are at, looking at a starting point of a 10% increase, which is significant. Right now, we're ahead of a lot of other jurisdictions or municipalities in terms of our budget process. The ones that are starting, other municipalities, are also indicating that 2026 will be a difficult budget year. So we're seeing similar numbers already. In terms of the specific challenges that we have, for parks and recreation, I think we have some unfortunate news for council, and that is that staff foresee the major project for 2026 is likely to be a large investment in the outdoor pool of approximately $700,000. This amount far exceeds the amount of annual funding towards capital funding that we've historically spent in a year towards parks and recreation. So it's a huge amount, and council's already aware of that we're currently funding a large backlog of capital projects for the EECC. Certainly, you've probably heard about the good funding outcome that we just had announced this week. That is helpful, but it certainly doesn't address the amount and scope of capital work that we're doing overall. And it is important to address these infrastructure issues, but obviously, it isn't as exciting for the public when we're repairing existing infrastructure for recreation services, and that's a challenge. It does place us in a better position, though, for the future. And certainly, as we proceed to the 2026 capital budget, we'll get into that more detailed, and council, the Finance Committee, sorry, will address what specific projects will proceed and what specific year. So there will be further consideration when we get into the capital. It's just initially, we do see a large cost in order to keep the pool operational for next year. And not pursuing that cost is likely to end with a pool closure for next year. Staff have also recently received new strategic direction from council on library. So we're beginning to plan for construction sometime starting in 2028. This is a relatively quick turnaround, given the complexity of the project. One aspect of this is that we will need to defer the substantial repairs to Old Town Hall to coincide with the library construction. Within this, staff will make sure that the building is maintained with our annually-assigned funds. We'll also access any surplus from the county lease funds to do any additional work to keep that building maintained until the work is undertaken. And if there's anything beyond that, staff will make council aware right away of any additional repairs that we need to do, because we don't want that building to go into a state of deterioration. There's two primary reasons for proceeding with Old Town Hall construction at the same time as the library. Firstly, we don't want to undertake work just to have the work removed and altered during the library construction. That's really not cost-effective, and it's a good way to upset citizens. I know if you pave a road and then you come and people see people cutting in it to put services the next year, that's something you get complaints about use of tax dollars. So that would be a similar situation with the Old Town Hall. And secondly, construction will be disruptive to both user groups, the library and the theater. So by coordinating construction to occur at the same time, we can minimize that disruption. So it should hopefully end in better overall outcomes for everybody. And with that, I'll ask Heather to outline her efforts on addressing the town's assessment issues.
Through you, member Barber, to the Finance Committee. Andy and Lisa and I have been working with MPAC about getting some of these houses and developments through the assessment process to the tax roll. So typically, it takes two years for some of these developments to hit our tax roll. So with all the large developments and investment that this committee and council has had in the taxpayers, we want to make sure that we're getting those assessments in ahead of the two-year window. So we've been following up with them, opening inquiries. So as Andy mentioned, the tax levy amount is 10%. We don't expect that to be the tax rate impact, so I don't want everybody in misinformation going out there thinking that that's what's going to happen. Right now, we have so far about 1% of the growth. We'll pay for that. We're hoping more, but the challenge is also the reassessment. So the properties that have now become exempt through subsidized or nonprofits or challenges to assessment. So that number should have been 3% or 4% by now, but through those ARB challenges and the reassessment challenges, that's what we're trying to get back with MPAC. So we've been meeting with the Regional Director and the Account Manager. We're following everything from building permits through to the tax roll. Our building and development teams have been very busy following up monthly with MPAC on some of these building permits, getting occupancy and getting closed. And we're hoping that the forecasted growth should offset a few of those tax points by the time year-end rolls around. So with that, we'll try to answer any questions.
Thanks, Heather. Any questions from the members of the committee? Member De Rosey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The boundary adjustment has been identified as a priority for 2026. Is there an expense factor in relation to the boundary adjustment? And if so, has that been factored into this projected increase?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to member De Rosey. Any negotiations that would happen, we're going to pay through for reserves. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be levying that amount.
Question, if I may. You indicated the getting impact to timely address the new development. How long does it normally take once occupancy is given on a new construction?
To you, Mr. Chair. They have a service-level agreement that typically will say that, you know, everything would get to the roll within two years. With the renovations, large renovations and stuff like that, they tried to key them before year-end, if possible. So because we have so many, and this is unprecedented growth for this area, we're trying to help from our end, from, you know, adding Roxanne and Adrian and Terry and Heather James and the whole team, and helping support Tyler to accelerate that. So every month, we're uploading the building permits, the closed, the opened, the new, and following up with plans, occupancy dates. You know, Lisa on the tax-collecting side is also following those to the sup and omen run. And if we don't see that happen, we're opening inquiries to say, you know, we're expecting this, what's happening? So typically, within two years of the occupancy date, but a lot of these have been closed or added quicker because of this follow-up.
Two years seems like an awfully long time.
It is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Member Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, you mentioned there was an impact due to the changes in assessment. Just to provide a bit more transparency in terms of what that impact is, can you elaborate? You know, the significance of that impact?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So there's a few things right now that are confidential coming through. Council has been providing for some of those things that are coming through. So an example would be if a multi-residential building was assessed as a condo development, and then two years after, the developer decides that they don't want to have condos, they want to do a multi-res property with apartments. So that drastically would reduce the assessment. So a building may go from $10 million to $4.3 million in the assessment. So that's the challenges we're having right now with some of the developments that have happened in the past. But also, when we're talking about nonprofits having, you know, buying up residential homes, for example, if a group of nonprofits buy up a residential neighborhood, or a few in the residential neighborhood, that nonprofit could be exempt from taxes. So those are substantial. Those basically go from, you know, a $3,000 tax impact for the town to $0. So that's just another example of how assessment can change.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, we have the report being moved and seconded. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? And the motion is carried. New business and inquiries by members? Nothing at this time. Adjournment, consider resolution to adjourn at 7:15. Moved by Member De Rosey, seconded by Member Barber. All in favor? And thank you, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Elmer Council. Everyone present, first of all, a confirmation of the agenda.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of June 18th, 2025, as amended with the following additions. Letter from the YWCA, a letter from Elgin County Drowning Prevention Coalition, and a letter from the Rip Current Information Project, and those to be added as consent communication items. And then additionally, a letter from, regarding 22 Wellington from Cynthia Grant, to be added as item 5.2. And that is all.
Thank you. A mover and a seconder. Counselor De Rosey and Counselor Chapman. Errors or omissions? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Delegations? We don't have any. We're down to, sorry, looking at a different agenda. Sorry. Declaration of delegations and associated staff reports. We are going to jump to 5.3. We will start with the resolution on that.
That report Plan 09-25, update on planning evaluation, application for official plan amendment, OPA 01-25 and bylaw amendment ZBA 01-25 be received for information, and that the council of the town of Elmer adopt the proposed official plan amendment, application OPA 01-25 in accordance with bylaw number 36-25, and forward the necessary documentation and bylaw to the county of Elgin for approval. And that the council of the town of Elmer approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, application ZBA 01-25 in accordance with bylaw number 37-25, and provide three readings to the bylaw. And that council direct staff to prepare an amendment to the town's parking bylaw based on recommendations in the updated traffic impact brief.
All right, thank you. A mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Barber. Heather?
Thank you, your worship. At the May 7th, 2025 public meeting, council deferred adoption of the official plan amendment and deferred passage of the zoning bylaw amendment for 22 Wellington Street. This was due to traffic concerns identified at the public meeting. Council's direction included discussion, which offered discretion to staff to assess the current traffic study or conduct a new third-party traffic study at the expense of the applicant. The town's clerk is of the opinion, given this discretion, that it was within the discretion of staff to seek the opinion of Elgin County on the current traffic study, and to have the consulting firm, Dillon Consulting, provide further information, presentation on their traffic study. Since the public meeting, staff have received an opinion from Elgin County, and Dillon Consultant has provided further information in the attached memo. The opinion the town has received from Peter Duchek, Director of Engineering Services, regarding the original traffic impact brief is as follows. The proposed development is consistent with the neighborhood land use. Can you hear me still? Oh, suddenly I faded out. And the projected trips are much less than nearby commercial properties would generate, such as McDonald's and LCBO. If there is quantifiable local information that suggests existing issues are present and would be exasperated, this information should be relayed to the consultant for evaluation and potential inclusion in an amending report. Operationally, I would suggest that parking be reviewed and potentially restricted in this area to improve turning movements and to eliminate potential sightline restrictions. Future improvements could include a continuous left-turn lane incorporating the LCBO and development entrances to facilitate free-flow movements if traffic flow became a real or perceived issue. Mr. Duchek also noted there appears to be sufficient roadway platform space available for line painting treatment if parking was eliminated. His last opinion was that the consultant's report is consistent with what is normally received by Mr. Duchek at Elgin County. Town staff also shared Mr. Duchek's comments with the consultant at Dillon Consulting, and they provided an updated traffic impact brief that has been attached to this report. Town staff have reviewed the updated traffic impact brief prepared by Doug Green, professional engineer at Dillon Consulting. The Director of Operations and Infrastructure has provided the following comments on the updated traffic impact brief. Would you like me to read out all the comments in detail, your worship? Okay. Dillon Consulting completed additional field observations in the subject area. The additional field observations confirm the original findings of no capacity delays or queuing issues in the area. The only findings were that vehicles turned to and from Sidham Street onto Wellington Street without coming to a complete stop. Police could monitor this area for rolling stops. The field observations also confirmed a potential on-street parking issue on the west side of Wellington Street from Sidham Street to LCBO entrance. Staff would agree with these findings. It would be staff's recommendation that if the development proceeds, no parking signs and bylaw amendment be completed to impose no parking on the west side of Wellington Street from Talbot Street to 30 meters south of Sidham Street, LCBO entrance. This would eliminate some of the congestion issues occurring in the area and at the existing, the exiting drive-through restaurant entrance. The revised recommendations recommend a future dedicated left-turn lane on Wellington Street at Talbot Street. This is triggered almost exclusively by a percentage increase in future background traffic, with the site-generated traffic having little impact. This could be warranted by 2030. The town's capital plan has denoted Wellington Street for reconstruction in 2034. This would be the ideal time to address the left-turn lane and intersection adjustment. Staff are of the opinion that the county's comments have been incorporated into the updated traffic impact brief, and by implementing the recommendations of no parking on a portion of the west side of Wellington Street, this will mitigate potential traffic impacts. So in conclusion, based on comments received from Elgin County, Dillon Consulting has updated the traffic impact brief. Town staff are of the opinion that the council's concerns pertaining to traffic have been addressed through the report and will be addressed through an amendment to the town's parking bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, before I ask for comments from council, that we will hear from Doug Green first. He may answer some of the questions that people have. So welcome, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll just give you a little summary. I think that was a pretty good one we just heard. Thank you very much. We undertook our traffic counts on November 13th. That was a Wednesday. And those counts were undertaken for three-hour period in the morning and three-hour period in the afternoon. And those revealed that the AM peak hour was occurring around 8:30 to 9:30 AM, and then in the afternoon, 4:15 to 5:15 in the PM. And we added about a 2%, we added 2% background growth rate to 2025 and in a 2030 horizon year. That just grows the existing volumes a little bit to reflect those future horizon years. And then we looked at the development itself. It's a 22-unit apartment building, as you know. That 22-unit apartment is expected to generate about nine trips total in the morning, in the morning peak hour, and about 11 trips in the PM peak hour. So to give you an idea, that 11 is in the afternoon peak hour, seven in and four out in the morning. The nine trips it generates is two in in the morning and seven out. The nine trips it generates is two in in the morning and seven out. When we assign that traffic to the network, some of it goes up to Talbot Street, turns left, some of it turns right, some of it heads down Sidham Street, and a very small amount would head south on Wellington to the south. So, when we look at the operations on those intersections in the existing timeframe versus the total future with the site in operation, it continues to operate the same as far as level of service goes. The delays are about the same. There's no change. Very slight modifications in the capacity, volume to capacity. It's a measurement of, you know, how close it's getting to capacity versus demand. But it all falls within the same levels of service, and that would be at Talbot Street and Wellington in the northbound direction. It's a level of service C currently. It would remain a level of service C in the future. So that's about a 25 to 30-second delay trying to make that left turn out. It's a very acceptable rate. All other movements throughout the study area are at a level of service A, which is less than 10-second delayed. So those are all excellent. As far as turn lanes go, we took a look at that following the comments that we received back from the town and the county engineer. And what we looked at specifically was, is there a left-turn warrant on Wellington Street at the driveway? And the volumes are just too low to warrant that. And where you look at that is MTO has a set of nomographs that they've developed over the years that look at the advancing volume, the approaching volume, the amount of traffic turning left. And if you fall within those nomographs, then you warrant a left-turn lane. So we are well below that left-turn lane warrant process. So nothing warranted at the driveway itself, no left-turn lane required. We did go out and take a look also at the Talbot Street and Wellington Street intersection, specifically the westbound left movement. As was mentioned, it's very close right now, not quite warranted for that westbound left-turn lane, but certainly by 2030, it's starting to get up there, especially in the PM peak hour. So it's something that the town should continue to monitor over time and implement that. It looks like the curbs are okay where they are, and you'd be able to most likely just do a removal of some of that parking on the north side and restripe the lines to accommodate that. Other than that, that was pretty much the findings. We did suggest that, as far as parking goes, we did suggest a parking restriction in front of the building, from just the north side of the building to the LCBO driveway. That's our presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from council? Consulier Chapman.
I still have the concern. Can you tell me on this day if there was delivery to McDonald's? And because what happens is, when there's a delivery to McDonald's, they block the drive-through with the delivery vehicle, and the vehicles that are going through the drive-through line up on Wellington Street, and they can create major congestion. And quite often, there's cars lining up to go into the drive-through, and there's cars parked on the west side of the road, and you cannot get through. So on the day that you did the survey, was that taken into consideration? And if not, is there any thoughts of having no stopping from the Talbot Street corner to the Sidham Street so that doesn't happen? I don't mean the line going into McDonald's. I mean the people that park on the west side of the road, and you can't get through.
Mr. Mayor, through you to answer that question. No, we did not take that into account. We weren't aware that there was loading on that's on the street from Wellington Street for the McDonald's. Certainly to answer the question, though, it is something that could be implemented by the town if there is an issue with that. You could implement the no-stopping or no-parking signs on that east side of Wellington Street.
Consulier Rozier, did you have a follow-up? Consulier Chapman? All right.
It's the east side of the street that they line up for to go into McDonald's. It's the west side of the street that they park on. So if...
On the side of the McDonald's on Wellington Street.
Terry, did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, maybe I can interject through your worship. So the report did highlight that staff would agree with the findings that no parking should be implemented on the west side of Wellington Street to eliminate that congestion issue. And that would be all the way from Talbot to the 30 meters south of Sidham, which is essentially the LCBO entrance.
One more question?
It's not just an issue of parking. It's what happens is, people are turning left from Talbot onto Wellington to try to go into the drive-through. Plus, we have people that have gone around the corner to Sidham and come up Wellington and are lined up to go into the drive-through. So just a no parking is not sufficient. It needs to be no stopping on the west side.
Can we look at that as well, Terry?
Well, there already is no, there's no parking on the east side currently. We could look at installing some no-stopping signs. That's more of a traffic issue than, you know, a policing issue, if you will, than signage. But like I said, we would agree with installing no-parking restrictions on the west side, which would eliminate some of that congestion so that vehicles aren't lined up on the west side, and then you don't have room for two-way traffic there. But we could look at no-stopping signage as well on the east side.
Okay. Thank you. Consulier Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Green, if I may. Just to confirm, the traffic study was done one day on a Wednesday? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, through you, yes, that's correct. One day.
Just some clarity on the rationale for that. I feel personally, like Wednesdays to me would be typically the slowest day, weekends being much busier, and not having any variable data to reflect on. I just find that the data that we are looking at is a little bit biased. So is that a typical planning procedure? Is just looking at one day isolated? Because, I mean, this is a 22-unit development, I believe. Probably, most residents will have two vehicles, so adding an additional potential 44 vehicles to this street, I would, I'd be interested in seeing a more comprehensive outline of the data that was collected, instead of it just being on a one day on a Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor, through you to respond to that question. It is quite typical for traffic engineering to use a single-day count. We don't try to pick a specific day over another day. What we try to do is get our data collected usually on a Tuesday to Thursday. Sometimes your Mondays are a little bit low, your Fridays might be a little bit higher. The weekends, obviously, are fairly busy, but what we find is typically like a Saturday afternoon would be fairly similar to your PM peak hour during the week. And certainly, a single count is what is normal in the industry. There's not, I can't think of any other municipality that we've ever looked at to count periods to check that. But that being said, what we're finding is that we're at, you know, level of service C on that northbound left at Talbot and Wellington, which is very reasonable. You've got a lot of spare capacity there. And everything else internal in the local streets is all operating at level of service A, which is extremely good. So there's a lot of spare capacity in the roadway network. The only question then would be, you know, if there was more volume, and, you know, over time, we're going to see more volume as things continue to grow. There certainly looks to be sufficient capacity in the road network, with the exception of that westbound left turn lane that we talked about on Talbot itself. So that would be, you know, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of room in the road network currently to accept additional traffic. So as far as sensitivity goes on the network, you know, there's a lot of room there. There's, we're not close to capacity is what I'm trying to say.
Anyone else? The council, okay, you have a resolution before you. So I will, you have a question, Consul' Rahi?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I thought that was just for Doug, but I have a comment about it. I just assume not see it go to high density. It's not even just the traffic fact of it all. I do believe that the study is, it might look good on paper, but I don't believe it's as accurate as it is if you were actually there trying to turn through the crap. But I think if you want to put up something this size, you should go to a new development where there isn't people that have lived there for a long time, and then it'll just be the new-new, instead of trying to add it into an existing part of town. So I disagree with this, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Consulier Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question through you to the planner. Elmer has an official plan that designates certain areas for high-density, medium-density, et cetera. Why do we, why do we have to have an official plan if we continue to amend or reinterpret the plan that we have? Like, this area was originally designated medium-density, which I agree with Member Rahi that it's better suited for that, opposed to high-density. So if we're continuing to amend the official plan, like, why do we even have an official plan?
Thank you. Through you, your worship, to Consulier de Rozier. An official plan is a guiding document. It's a higher-level policy guidance document. Our zoning bylaws, where we get into the regulatory area. Every applicant has the right to apply to have a redesignation on their lands. We have a list of criteria within the official plan for redesignation from a lower or medium-density designation to a high-density designation. There was a study done as part of a planning justification report, as well as my own report, and this proposal does meet the criteria within our official plan, as well as our provincial policy statement and the county's plan, to change the designation from these lands from medium-density to high-density residential. Our plan already recognizes these lands are to be for medium-density residential. It does have allowances within there to go to a high-density, provided it meets criteria. It's also important to note that town of Elmer is a tier-one community within the county of Elgin official plan. We are a fully-service community where the highest levels of growth and intensification are to occur.
Consul' Rahi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, just a comment, just because you can doesn't mean that you always should. So I understand that we can, but I believe, my opinion, that we shouldn't. Thank you.
I think we discussed the issue fully enough right at this point. We have a further comment from you, Andy, concerning the...
No, I just want to ensure that council is also aware that Bill 17, you recall, we updated you on Bill 17. Before the comment period closed, the province has adopted it. And now, the sufficiency of a report submitted by a developer on this type of application is no longer a valid reason for council to advance an appeal. So you've actually lost the ability now to assess whether the traffic engineering report is sufficient as a valid reason for not approving that. And I just wanted to ensure that council was aware that the province has done that, and I certainly, I never like to say to council, here's a turd sandwich, but that's essentially what's happened. You can take as long to chew on it as you want, but it's not great when the province comes in and heavy hands municipalities. But that's the situation.
Okay, seeing no further comments, I will call the question. All those in favor of the resolution? Please raise your hands. Opposed? And it is passed, four to three. Item six, consent agenda, communications and staff reports, resolution?
That the June 18th, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, and that the council of the town of Elmer hereby endorses the Elmer-Elgan-St. Thomas Community Safety and Well-being Plan update, and that a copy of the Elmer-Elgan-St. Thomas Community Safety and Well-being Plan and the 2025 update be posted on the town website, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held of council on May 21st, 2025.
Move in second, or Consulier Chapman and Consul' Ozletz. So, any discussion on this? Consulier de Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we able to take items 6.1.5, 6.1.6, and 6.1.7, the endorsement letters, and move them lower in the agenda to discussion item 8.1?
You'd like to move those down into the discussion, which is your notice of motion. Is that correct? Seeing that, they deal with that. I don't see any problem with doing that. So that we be voting on everything but 6.15 through to 6.17? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Thank you. So we will be moving those other items to 8.1. 6.2, minutes to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, we passed all those. That's right. Item seven, we're at this point. 7.1, CAO Report, Grant Application, Health and Safety Water Stream, resolution?
That report CAO 30-25, respecting a grant application, health and safety water stream, be received for information, and that council endorses the town's application for the health and safety water stream grants for headworks improvements and introduction of modular biofilters.
Move in second, or Consulier Chapman and Consul' Rahi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think I let out an audible groan when staff told me that we had a potential strong application for another lagoon grant. Certainly, staff have been before council a lot related to the town's water and wastewater system, so I was concerned that there might be some issue fatigue. We, however, really can't ignore that this is an area where the province is prioritizing grant funding, and the town has had amazing levels of success in securing funds through these grants. So although this is a project I certainly would have preferred to bring forward to council in five years, we really can't ignore that we have a very strong application and a potential for 73% funding of an estimated $8 million project, which is the highest level of provincial funding that I've seen in many years. So overall, this is a great opportunity for the town to further maximize the potential of the lagoon system through the headworks and the installation of a biofilter membrane that will remove microplastics. The improvement to the treatment capacity will increase the life cycle of the lagoons. It will also make it potentially possible for the materials to be applied to farmland rather than made landfill. And so ultimately, this project not only plans for the future of the lagoons, but it also enhances the town's environmental stewardship. The grant team has been meeting regularly on this application for several months, and we feel we have a really strong application ready, and we're before council to ask for your endorsement to proceed.
Questions from council? Consul' Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to maybe Andy. Would we only go through this project if we got the grant? Is that kind of the plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe so, and I think that if we were successful in getting the grant, we anticipate that it would have minimal impact on the water and wastewater rates, because we've been successful in so many grants related to the water system.
Consulier de Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff, we do have a delegation booked for AMO with the Minister of Infrastructure, or we've applied at least. Is this something that could be prioritized as part of that delegation to maybe support the potential for funding?
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that is carried, thank you. 7.2 Director Emergency Services Fire Extinguisher Training Resolution.
That report fire 04-25 be received for information and that council approve the fire department to provide fire extinguisher training free of charge to citizens and businesses in the Town of Elmer.
Mover and seconder, Counselor DeRosier, Counselor Rahi. I'm sorry, yes, Counselor Rahi. Chief.
Thank you, worship. Good evening, members of council. Sorry I'm running late. I was attending firefighter graduation this evening, so I tried to fit both of those in tonight, so thank you for your patience. Fire extinguisher training is educating the public on the safe use of fire extinguishers. We all can recognize that probably even in the room, everybody has a fire extinguisher in their house, but the fire department's concern is how do you know how to use it properly? So that's what we're taught, we're trying to teach our residents, our businesses to understand how to use these fire extinguishers in the proper manner. And it might even turn out to be a little cost effective for the fire department. Not that we want everybody to turn into firefighters, but they have to know when it's safe to use a fire extinguisher and when it isn't. As you read in the report, we're also mandated to establish a program that includes public education with respect to fire safety, and this fills that niche quite nicely. And I think it's a great service that the fire department can provide. We've done a pilot project on this with some businesses and it's been very, very well received and we're very excited to roll forward with this with council's blessing. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for that report, council. Counselor Rahi?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's great to see grants coming in, which is good news, but I have a question as far as if it has ever been with something like this, could it go to schools? Like the high school, obviously not, not too young, but high schools, that would be very, very interesting to see happen, so.
Absolutely, through your worship. That's our target market is we like to start with the babysitters like we started at the schools right now and open it up to everybody who, who can benefit from the, from the training and businesses as well as citizens. And that's the target market. We just, to make it a little bit safer out there for everybody.
Counselor DeRosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a wonderful engagement initiative and thank Firehouse Subs for the lovely grant to contributed to this. And I myself actually got to test it out earlier this week, which was quite interesting to have a, a review of how to do it again. So thank you very much, Fire Chief, for this and for promoting this program.
Counselor Chapman.
Through you, your worship. Can I, through you, Chief McComb, can you just tell me how you're going to implement this? Are you going to have an, an event or how will it be brought forward?
Excellent question through, through your worship. We generally get a lot of questions on social media already. We have worked with a couple of businesses that have reached out. It ties in nicely when they start to do their fire safety plans, expand their services when, when fire gets involved. And we generally include that and say, hey, have you ever done fire extinguisher training with your groups or your employees? And the answer, of course, is no. Where do we get that done? And we say, right here. So how it would start is we will do a social media campaign. We'll, we'll start with businesses. We did last year at our open house, we had fire extinguisher training for free. We had fire extinguisher training day at the fire station last year with the use from St. Thomas Fire and thank them for that, for using their digital fire extinguisher trainer at that time. We get phone calls from groups, from, from scouts, from all kinds of, of clubs. Condo associations are big. We do a lot of training with the condo associations in Elmer, and this is another device that we can bring to them. So people and organizations are reaching out to us already. So it's just, we're going to have to be very careful how we book because it's going to get a lot of attention. It's going to be very popular. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you to the chief. It'll be nice when everybody in town knows what the pass acronym. Firefighters like to burn stuff. How does the system work?
Through your worship, it's a digital, what I like about it is I had it here in council, we did it if, if some staff remember, I think it was a couple of years ago, we did it in this room. We did some fire extinguisher training for staff and council members at that time. The nice thing about this trainer, Deputy Mayor, is you can do it anywhere, rain or shine, inside, outside. It's clean, it's environmentally friendly. We don't burn diesel in a tray, which I'm sure you can relate to being a fire chief in the past. All that's behind us now. It's a new environmentally friendly way. It uses technology. It sounds like a fire, it looks like a fire. The extinguisher is digital, it sounds and weighs like a fire extinguisher. It lasts as long and it puts a path on the, on the, on the screen that simulates a stream of a fire extinguisher. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, as carried, thank you. So go to 8.1, a notice of motion from Counselor DeRosier. Do you want to read that?
Sure. Whereas Town Council has supported staff's recommendation to provide funding to the YWCA, recognizing swimming as a critical life skill and as an essential public service that supports healthy, health, safety, and community well-being. And whereas the implementation of non-resident user fees in 2024 corresponded with the YWCA's decline in non-resident registrations, with data indicating that the fee acted as a deterrent, ultimately reducing overall participation and diminishing program revenues. And whereas this trend raises serious concerns about the sustainability and fairness of the current funding model, particularly when public tax dollars continue to subsidize service gaps while access becomes increasingly limited. And whereas members of council have consistently affirmed that swimming is a life skill and that access to such programming should not be restricted by political boundaries, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to reevaluate the town's non-resident user fee policy as it pertains to the YWCA swim program. And that council revoke the non-resident user fee for 2025 swim season in order to eliminate financial barriers, support program recovery, and promote inclusive access for all participants. And that the town reaffirm its commitment to ensuring equitable access to essential recreation services while advancing the values of public safety, health, and community inclusivity.
Do we need to add the three communications to the resolution or not?
Ken, if you'd like, that the communications be received for information.
Okay, mover and seconder? Yes, Counselor DeRosier, mover, of course, and Counselor Rahi, second. Discussion. Counselor DeRosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this motion forward because it reflects both the values and practical responsibilities of this council. We have repeatedly affirmed that swimming is a critical life skill, a skill that protects lives, fosters confidence, and provides a foundation for lifelong health and well-being. When council implemented a non-resident user fee in 2024, the intent was to create a fair funding model. However, the data we now have tells a different story, one we cannot ignore. While Elmer residents registration remained steady last summer, overall participation in our aquatic programs declined. The drop was tied directly to the decrease in non-resident registrations, with the fee acting as a deterrent. For contrast, the YWCA swim programs delivered in neighboring facilities and without non, non-resident fees saw steady growth. This comparison shown in May 2025's presentation, particularly slide five, reinforces the connection between these fees and the reduced participation. According to the YWCA, non-resident summer registrants were not only from Malahide, but also from St. Thomas, Central Elgin, Bayham, and beyond. These are our neighbors, families who live, work, and play in our region and who have long supported and benefited from shared services like this. Under the current model, access to those services is being constrained by municipal lines, lines that mean little to a child who's learning to swim. As we look ahead to 2025, we must ask ourselves what kind of community we want to be. If we say swimming is a life skill, then we must act accordingly. If we value safety, inclusion, and equity, then we must make decisions that reflect those values. That is why I'm supporting this motion. By revoking the non-resident user fee for 2025 swim season, we are taking the necessary steps to remove financial barriers, support program recovery, and ensure inclusive access to all who wish to participate. This is not only about fairness, it is about sustainability, community health, and ensuring that access to essential life skills like swimming isn't limited by arbitrary borders. It's about putting children's safety first and standing by our values of equity and inclusion so that no child is excluded simply because of where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Barber first and then Counselor Chapman.
Thank you. Catherine DeRosie, by way of this motion, wants to directly create a benefit to the residents of areas outside Elmer at the direct, at the direct expense to the taxpayers of Elmer. Outside residents should direct their concerns to their local municipal council. Malahide Council, as is a right, chose to not support the desirable life skills of swimming lessons, necessitating a partial cost recover by Elmer in a two-tier fee, fee structure. Elmer is not trying to turn profit from swimming lessons. We are only trying to recover some of the costs of that program provided by an outside supplier. And further to the, to the three letters that, that were received in support of Elmer Council picking up some of the cost of the swimming program, first, let's understand that no member of this council has ever done anything except support the, the concept of every person being able to swim. The only action that we took was that we respect that, that ability to learn to swim, but somebody has to pay for it. And at this particular time, the, or a year or so ago, it was decided that a portion of the cost of that learn to swim program be paid by the residents from their, if they do not live in the Town of Elmer. Three letters were received in support of Counselor DeRosie's motion. One was from the, the Y, and I really don't understand why a supplier of the swimming program, although they were reached out by, in my belief, Counselor DeRosie and probably provided with the A-generated, AI-generated letter, they have taken a political position that is contrary to what is normally done by municipalities. We use the, the Y as the contractor. And to, to reach out to a contractor and solicit their support is, is just, to me, it's, it's mind boggling, boggling. The RIP current letter, again, appears to be of similar format. I respect that the, that letter and the Elgin Drowning Coalition, their, their motivation is to encourage swimming and swimming lessons. Nothing wrong with that. What they don't understand is that it's not the Town of Elmer's responsibility to, to provide that carte blanche. I'll give you a hypothetical scenario. The Toronto Blue Jays want to bring their coaching staff and their players to the area, and they're going to put on a training camp. The, the camp is going to benefit aspiring baseball players. It may encourage kids to get involved in baseball. It may encourage them just to have a team environment. It's going to cost 100 bucks a person to put this on. A neighboring municipality says, great, I think that's a super program. We're going to pay that on behalf of the, so the kids can attend. Interest is overwhelming. We get people from all over the area. Do you think in a nanosecond that the neighboring municipality is going to pick up the cost of those people that aren't members of their community? Of course not. They're not expected to, and they probably shouldn't. That's up to the local area to, to make it happen. This isn't an Elmer versus the rest of the community scenario. This is Elmer trying to utilize the best resources that we can, our, our taxpayers' base, for the benefit of the people directly within the town. Thank you.
Counselor Chapman.
I wanted to look at another, through your worship, I wanted to look at other communities and see what they are doing. And Tilsenberg has actually started to implement a non-resident fee as well. So this is not only Elmer that's doing this. Other municipalities are starting to realize that it, it takes more than, providing the service to your own community is one thing, providing it to others, it, it increases the cost to your own municipality, and there needs to be recovery of some kind. And that's all we're asking for, is some recovery to make our expenses less instead of increasing our expenses to have those come from outside the community to use our facility.
Okay, thank you. Just to add to what you said, yes, Tilsenberg is, is going with user fees for the pool. And actually, St. Thomas has been doing that for quite some time. So I was interested in the, the choice of words in the three letters, and one of those words was inclusivity in terms of implying that, you know, if we don't do this, that we're not being very inclusive. And I guess Tilsenberg and St. Thomas aren't being very inclusive either under that. Thank Counselor Rahi.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure what staff, but maybe someone can answer. What, how much money did the no resident fee generate last year? I have a follow-up after that as well.
Through you, we didn't have, through you, Mr. Mayor, we didn't have definitive information on, financial information from them on exactly how much. You took the, I generally took the number that we had for lessons of non-residents and I added the $50, and I came up with an estimate of between $8,000 and $10,000, which was, Malahide used to contribute 18 to 20. And just so council's aware, I have discussed this with the YWCA this week. It was a positive discussion. They certainly were very supportive of the additional money last year, the additional $70,000 this year from council that kept the pool open. And they, they are at a point in their registration now where they're not asking for us to take 2025 fee out. The registration, by the time council could repeal a bylaw, the registration would be well over half over, most of the registrations already closing, so. And they also kind of agree that one year of data isn't sufficient to make the kind of, we don't have the empirical evidence to say that, that there's a cause and effect relationship negatively with this yet. But certainly I can understand why council wants this reviewed and wants us to try to bring, negotiate something with Malahide and bring them back to the table in a way like they were in 2023, not necessarily even to cover all the additional costs that Elmer is now stepping forward over the last two years to cover to keep this pool operational.
Do we charge a non-resident fee for everybody other than, obviously Malahide is, is a 50% shareholder of the E E C C, but there's other people that I know that are from South Holden and all over the place. Do they pay a non-resident fee to Elmer and Malahide for the complex and baseball games? Is that kind of a, do we, do we charge it on everything or is it just, just at the pool?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Great question. Normally you don't see municipalities charging it related to baseball fields because when you look at baseball or soccer fields, the level of subsidization is usually quite low. It's around 20 to 30%, but when you look at an arena, it is about 60%. And it certainly is something that some municipalities have looked at, particularly where they had partnerships around a facility, a shared facility, and the one municipal partner stepped away. So it hasn't been something that we would look at now. There have been changes for youth sports, and youth sports would be the biggest area where we did it. Youth hockey now, you can go free agent wherever you want now. Youth hockey now, you can go free agent wherever you want now. So it may be an issue in the future, but certainly, the way we set rates is based on what other arenas around us charge largely.
Counselor Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an opportunity to respond to a lot of the comments. So firstly, to respond to Deputy Mayor Barber's comments, I would like to bring a point of order that's happened quite frequently from Deputy Mayor Barber. Robert's Rules of Order is that we avoid direct confrontation and we avoid personal remarks. So referring to me by my personal name is a direct violation of Robert's Rules of Order, and I ask that future dialogues that we have at this council table remain respectful and professional and follow the rules of order. Secondly, from the conversations that I'm hearing, especially from two members of this council, is that there's a very personal tone taken from this motion, and that was not the intent. The intent was not a personal attack. It was bringing a concern to this council that I, in my opinion, felt that this council would share. It was more observed to be something of unity, not divisiveness. So I'm not quite sure where that personal tone is coming from, but that was definitely not the intent. The other point that was made was about these letters of support, and I'm assuming accusation that this was solicited personally by me. This information, this motion, was shared on my social media, and I received those endorsements from those individuals. And I said, hey, this is great, like, I appreciate your endorsement on social media, but would you mind actually putting this in a letter so I can bring it to council and it can be on public record? And they said, absolutely. So, again, not a personal attack or malicious intent behind it. I thought, again, it would be something that would benefit this discussion and that council members would appreciate, not have concerns with. So I'm a bit surprised about that. The other thing that we discussed is having other municipalities, such as Tilsenberg, put the non-resident fee in. I frequent Tilsenberg Pool quite often with my son. They might have one, but they've actually, I don't think they enforce it, to be honest, because they've never asked me to approve my residency, and I've never had to pay it. St. Thomas, they have a different approach. They have a standard fee, and they actually compensate residents, so they offer a discount to their residents. They don't penalize other members. It's a flat rate, and they discount their residents accordingly. So it's a different approach. I understand it's the same idea, but it is a different approach. It's more of a diplomatic approach in my eyes. And the other thing as well is, is that there was a good point brought up about other facilities, such as the EECC, such as Baseball Diamonds. Other municipalities have beaches that have a lot of overhead costs for their residents. There's pickleball courts. There's various amenities that are shared between municipalities, services that are shared. And my fear is, is that, okay, Tilsenberg does it, and we do it, and then basically it's going to be a domino effect, and then what you're going to have is a tit-for-tat and all these non-resident fees, when, in my eyes, the municipalities shouldn't be focusing on divisiveness and us versus them. It should be what works for us united, what works for us shared in collaboration. Like, that should be the focus of our discussions. It shouldn't be based on divisiveness. So that is the intent behind bringing this forward to this council, and I truly do hope that council does support it and looks at the bigger picture of this, rather than focusing on any personal agendas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I have a resolution. Did you have another comment, Counselor Chapman?
I ask that the decision of this be deferred until the next motion be addressed, and we look for a response to the next motion.
Okay, the next motion really doesn't counter this one. The next motion basically asks for us to contact Malahide and ask them. So regardless of what we say in this one, it doesn't matter in terms of the next motion. So I don't see the point in deferring it at this point.
Can I, my theory was just that if we can gain support from Malahide, then we wouldn't need a user fee for non-residents. So that would be the reason for deferring the decision. And I realize that it can't be changed for 2025, but it can look towards 2026. And if Malahide could see the need of their youth learning to swim as much as we do, then maybe they would consider reinstating, and we wouldn't need to worry about the user fees.
Okay, so, yeah, I think I misunderstood. So you're going to defer until we get an answer from Malahide?
Yes.
In terms of, if you make a motion to defer, I need a second. Are you seconding that motion to defer until after we hear back from Malahide? Okay, so the defer, the motion has been deferred, but moved in seconded. There's no discussion on this, so we'll call the question on deferral. All those in favor of deferral? And it is passed. Thank you. So we'll move to item 8.2. Deputy Mayor Barber, notice of motion respecting the Elmer Pool. And read them.
Whereas the original rationale for implementing a non-resident user fee at the Elmer Pool was the township of Malahide's withdrawal of funding, support for the YWCA programming, and whereas the town of Elmer has a duty to protect the financial interests of its taxpayers, and whereas swimming programming provides value to all individuals, especially those along the Lake Erie shoreline, and whereas the town of Elmer has provided a new significant additional financial contribution in 2025 to support YWACA aquatic programming, and whereas a significant portion of Elmer swimming programming participants continue to not reside in the town of Elmer, and whereas the town of Elmer continues to plan for major upcoming capital commitments for the Elmer Pool, including a line of replacement scheduled for 2026, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Elmer formally requests that the township of Malahide reconsider partnering with the town of Elmer and the YWCA to support access to swim programming for Malahide residents for the 2025 swim year program, and that the council of the town of Elmer further requests that the township of Malahide consider incorporating such a partnership in its 2026 municipal budget.
So this is moved by Deputy Mayor Barber, seconded by Counselor Rahi. Discussion.
Could I just make one suggestion? Could we, would council consider just making it for 2026 rather than 2025? It's certainly up to council, but they've already established their budget, and it might be easier for us to have the discussion for them to come on board next year. It's up to you, as a mover.
Here's a second. Are you good with that? Okay. So it's 2026 we're talking about. Did you want to go first, Deputy Mayor Barber?
No.
No? Okay. Counselors Rozier and then Counselor Rahi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully support that approach and believe regional collaboration. Just to be clear, though, the suggestion was made in 2024, prior to the non-resident fee being approved and established. On February 21, 2024, both myself and Counselor Rahi encouraged further intermunicipal discussions, and this was unsupported by staff and remaining council. So I just want to make sure that point is noted.
Counselor Rahi.
Mine, I guess, through you, Mr. Mayor, what I was going to say is very similar to that, just not as smart. This is how we probably should have started this whole thing, instead of where it has gotten to. So, yes, I fully support this, and I fully support our last motion from Counselor Rozier. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, you have a comment, Counselor Barber.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, this interesting discussion. I just have questions, thoughts, that I'm, as I'm listening to everybody talk. If we approach Malahide, well, before I get into that, so, looking at this, I understand both sides, supporting the swimming program, but also not having an additional cost to Elmer taxpayers, and that was my direction that I was planning on going, is not having an additional cost to taxpayers, because it's not fair for Elmer residents to have to front the cost of a pool for people that don't live in Elmer. If we approach Malahide, and Malahide says we're on board, and they're going to help us fund again, are we just going to eliminate non-user fees? And then does that include people from Bayham, people from Central Elgin, people from potentially Tilsenberg and St. Thomas? Because now our two municipalities are back paying for the pool. What does that look like? That's just my thoughts, or we're still going to have people from outside Malahide and Elmer. We're not eliminating it to Malahide and Elmer, so are we still going to have non-resident fees for outside, or is just we're eliminating that totally?
Did you want to answer that in terms of your intention, Deputy Mayor, or Andy? You had a comment on that first.
It might assist council. Before this, when we were tracking where people were from, the breakdown was roughly 40% Malahide, 40, 44% Malahide in the previous usage. So I don't think, now that Elmer has stepped up, and, you know, certainly, the pool would not be operational if earlier this year you didn't approve 70 grand in additional funding towards the pool to come up for the YWCA's grant shortfalls. I don't think we're going to go back to Malahide and ask them to fund the additional amounts that we're funding now. I think before, one of the rationales for leaving was that there was an old agreement that had a recreation board that simply became defunct or somehow became the EECC board or something. And now, I think what we're just looking for is a very simplified, how much are you willing to support, or do you want to support Elmer, or do you want to support the YWCA directly even? And can we rely on you for stable, ongoing funding? And I think that's a much simpler discussion. And certainly, I don't know if we want to go to Bayham or Central Elgin and say, we estimate that you're 5% the users, and we want to put on a fee on you, but we could certainly make a request to their councils for some contribution to the program as well, if you wanted.
Counselor Barber.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Andy. Now, if that helps knowing, if you have the numbers on how many resident, like, the percentage from Malahide and then from Elmer, and if it's lower from outside of that, then that makes sense to me. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know whether I would go as far in the analysis that Andy is suggesting. I think it's good to know where people are coming from that are using the pool, and especially the swimming program. Like a ballpark, like an arena, like a swimming pool, I think that the vast majority of those costs have to be borne by the whole municipality. This particular issue revolved around the cost of providing the swimming program, not recreational swimming, but the swimming lessons per se. And I would hope that a partner would step forward and help us with the share cost of at least that. And if they were willing to support some of the capital improvements, that's all the better. But that would not necessarily be my objective, at least out of the box. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, and it is carried. Thank you. Reading of bylaws, resolutions?
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 37-25, being a bylaw to amend by law number 5799, being the zoning bylaw of the town of Elmer. That's respecting 22 Wellington Street. Bylaw 42-25, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council held at the regular council meeting on June 4, 2025. Bylaw 43-25, being a bylaw to make amendment number 25 to the official plan of the town of Elmer, 22 Wellington Street. And bylaw 44-25, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor, clerk, and the chief administrative officer to execute a transfer payment agreement.
Moving in second, Counselor Barber and Deputy Mayor Barber. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Inquiries by members? Counselors Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had some residents reach out to me wanting an update on the vacant parcel of land in the downtown there where we had the fire, concerns with that blue tarp coming off the building, wanting to know what's going on with that. Is staff able to provide an update, or are we expecting an update to come to council anytime soon? Thank you.
Andy.
I might see if staff know about the blue tarp, but I can give you, I talked about two and a half weeks ago, I gave the owner of the property a call. I asked him, respecting his plans. Certainly, he indicated that he fully intends to develop the site, but they haven't engaged anybody to start the design yet. I don't think realistically that we'll see anything come forward this year, but they've always upheld that they wanted to redevelop the site, once they worked through issues with the final insurance on the property. So I do think that they intend to, and I'm not sure if staff have had any, Terry, have you heard anything about the tarp? I know one day last week, it was really blowing in the wind.
I don't have a specific update on it, but I can definitely look into it and report back and see if it can be either repaired or looked into.
Did you? Okay. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? About a year or so ago, I asked if there was any, if the owner of the property would consent to the creation of a passive park until such time as development occurred. Did he buy into that at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, he was not opposed to us putting benches there. I think one of the challenges that we had is just trying to identify where we would fund it from. So if council would want us to consider that, we could look into it further and come up with some options. It's kind of, we also had some risk about, concerns about the risk of the gravel there and making it, encouraging people to walk across it, that there might be some more trip hazards. So we certainly could look at it. I just, I guess we were being frugal.
Could we pass that question along to the Parks and Rec Committee? Thank you. I have a question, and that I'd like to ask if I could.
Okay.
To Terry, can we have an update on Elk Street, please?
Yes, it's a great question, and through your worship to Deputy Mayor Barber and the rest of council. The, just a quick update on Elk Street. The tender had the project starting in early March, that was the hope. The project started several weeks late, and that was strictly due to cold temperatures in the spring. The temporary water main had a risk of freezing because it's overland, over everyone's front yard. That's the blue pipe across everyone's front yard. So they had a bit of a late start on the project, so they've been working very diligently to catch up. And so the underground work on Phase 1, which is between Victoria and Talbot Street, should be done within the next week or so. And that way, then they can move on to excavating the road and putting in the new gravel for the roadway. So that lines up well with the fair that's going to be happening on June 27, 28, the tractor pull event. So the goal is to get the roadway opened up to local traffic. It'll still be closed with road closed signs, but it will be open to local traffic, and that entrance off Elk Street will be open for that event. It will be to gravel surface, so just before they put curb down, so the road will be cleaned up for that event. Then within the next two weeks, the curb and asphalt should be placed, so the timing for that should be within, by mid-July, Phase 1 will be paved with asphalt curb, and then they will be moving on to Phase 2, which is from Victoria to John Street.
Counselors Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the remarkable efforts of the students of East Elgin Secondary School, who hosted their annual Relay for Life event this past Friday. I was once again invited to participate in the activities and left feeling inspired by the level of organization, energy, and leadership demonstrated by the students and staff. Although the final total is still being confirmed, the school has projected that this year's fundraising efforts will reach approximately 55,000, a truly outstanding contribution in support of cancer research and support services. Events like these not only make a significant impact on the lives of those affected by cancer, but also highlight the strength, compassion, and civic engagement of the next generation. I'd like to extend sincere congratulations to all students, staff, and volunteers involved in making this community event such a powerful success. Additionally, with the Elmer Community Festival just days away, I want to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge and thank the incredible planning committee behind the event. The festival has been more than a year in the making, and it simply would not have been possible without the dedication, collaboration- the dedication, collaboration, and shared vision of the organizing team. Their commitment to creating a vibrant, inclusive, and family-friendly event is a reflection of what makes our community truly special. I want to sincerely thank each member of the planning committee for their hard work, creativity, and belief in the value of bringing our community together. We're all looking forward to a fantastic weekend, and it's thanks to them that we have something worth celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for organizing the festival. Good luck, and look forward to a lot of people going there. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you. A quick update from the Elmer Secondary Water Board. Met today. In the last quarter, there were no complaints or concerns. The audit was recently completed. Using Counselor Rosselach's word, it was a clean audit. One of the notations was that interest on investments amounted to approximately a quarter of a million dollars, which will be transferred to reserve for future projects. Thank you.
Anyone else? Stop dropping things. Mayor's, reported the mayor, I have none at this time. We'll go to notice of motion? No notice of motion. All right. Meeting close to the public?
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at eight twenty-nine PM to discuss the following matters. Director of Financial Services and Treasurer Report Finance thirteen dash twenty-five, new salary grid, and Elmer Chief Administrative Officer, verbal update and memo respecting an OLT appeal. And that consideration of these items is to be close to the public pursuant to section two thirty-nine to D, E, and K of the Municipal Act as amended, as the subject matter pertains to D, labor relations or employee negotiations, E, litigation or potential litigation including matters before an administrative tribunal affecting municipality or local board, or K, a plan or a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be implied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Moving on to second, or Counselor Rosselach and Counselor Rozier. All those in favor, as carried, and we'll have a brief recess.